Followed with the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Kavanaugh. Is that okay Supervisor? Okay, cool. So, those that wish to join us, if you could please stand.
I want to just share a scripture. It says, "But let justice roll on like a river, righteousness like a never-failing stream." Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, I just thank you for this morning. I thank you, Lord, for this Board of Supervisors as they lead, Lord, what I believe is the greatest county in Arizona. I pray for wisdom. I pray for your peace to be in this place. I pray, Father, for every decision that they have to make, everything they're hearing, that they will have your wisdom in it. And, Lord, that your righteousness will just prevail and flow through this county. And, Lord, we just give this to you in your precious name. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you Pastor. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, gentlemen. Just a quick note. I got a text message yesterday from a good friend of the Johnson family. And Mr. George Johnson passed away on Monday evening. And I just, maybe if we could give a moment of silence to their family. Thank you. You know, I think a lot of us in this, in the Pinal County owe a lot to George Johnson and his entrepreneurialship. I think many of us moved into many of the communities that he was a big part in the Pinal area, within the Santan Valley region. And so I think it was appropriate that we do that. And we recognize him and efforts and things that he's done in the years past. So with that being said, we now begin our Board of Supervisors meeting dated Wednesday, May 1st, 2024. And our first item on the agenda is called of the public. Consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those that are wishing to address the Board of Supervisors need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing our staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and discussion at a later date. So I believe... Are these any calls to the public? All three of them, okay. Item, so Barry McCain. And then when you come forward, if you just, to, let me remind you, respectfulness, always the best way. And then the second thing is, is that if you'll state your name and general location, where you live, that'd be appreciated. Thank you.
I want to introduce my staff and friends. My name is Barry McCain from Maricopa, the city of Maricopa. I think now, after what's happened at U of A and what we've experienced, each one of us, this legislative session, I need to state how much I appreciate this Board of Supervisors. The housing situation and, and not just my veterans, but the housing situation and transportation, you're taking care of it at the best possible time that you can. And I think you should hear that because I'm very proud of what you've done and I'm very thankful for that. And you need to hear that before you hear all the rest of people detractors. You're doing a wonderful job and I want you to know that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCain. The next person that is requested is Douglas Reber.
Hello, I'd like to... My name's Douglas Reber. I'm from Gilbert, Arizona. I own properties in Pinal County. And I'd like to just interject into public record, if I could, some public safety information that's related to an item on the agenda today.
This is public comment, so you can get that over at some later date. Go ahead Natasha.
I'll take it for the record.
I don't know if, are you, is this in regards to agenda item?
Is this, which agenda item is this referencing to?
It's in reference to SUP 028-23.
Oh, number 11.
I think number 11. All this is, is accident data. I want to be very respectful and just, this just shows, and it's sourced by City Data, 23 fatal accidents between where the proposed site is and Oracle Junction over the years, 2005 to 2021. And I just think that's a matter of importance. Right now, currently, there's present about 15 to 25 miles that has no coverage on that dangerous highway. The proposed tower would probably reduce that on a good day as much as 30% the gap in service. And that's all I want to comment right now. I just want this to be submitted for consideration on the matter.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
The next I have is, is, am I reading this right? Tolerance? Oh, but George, I should have read a little bit farther down. I apologize, George. That should be my name is tolerance.
I received bad grades for handwriting when John F. Kennedy was president. Hasn't gotten any better. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and Sir Vice Chairman, Supervisors. I am George Ellison. I live in Gold Canyon. When the Constitutional Convention was over in 1787, Benjamin Franklin was walking down the steps. A lady came up to him. Her name was Elizabeth Powell. And she asked him, "Well, Doctor, what have we got? A republic or a monarchy?" And Benjamin Franklin said to her, "A republic, if you can keep it." So that's the issue. Can we keep it? We have two major political parties here, obviously, the Democrat Party, the Republican Party. And the Democrat Party of Presidents Truman, Kennedy, and Clinton is dead. Don't listen to me, listen to Democrat, former Democrat Representative Tulsi Gabbard from Hawaii, very deep blue state. And she said, "The party I joined over 20 years ago no longer exists. I could no longer remain in today's Democrat Party, which is now under complete control of an elitist cabal of war mongers fueled by cowardly wokeness who divide us by racializing every issue and stoke anti-white racism, actively work to undermine our God-given freedoms enshrined in our Constitution, our hostile people of faith and spirituality, demonize the police, allow our hostiles to us, and they protect criminals at the expense of law-abiding citizens. Allow our borders to remain open, claiming they're secure, they weaponize national security, state to go after political opponents." So what do we see now? Well, we see the American Intifada, which is basically a violent uprising, originally set up as a violent uprising against the country of Israel. And now it's here, in our land and our borders, at our campuses. And there's a great deal of money funding them. By the, if you looked at their tents, did you ever notice that? They have very nice tents, basically two different colors, but they're all the same. Well, unless they went to tents or us, somebody's funding this, right? And then it's primarily Arabella Advisors. Nobody knows who they are. I didn't know who they were until last week. They are a deep state PAC for the Democrat Party and for leftist causes. They have $1.7 billion, okay? So what have we seen? We've seen antisemitism in our country. I never thought I would see that in my lifetime, but we do. And it's just, it's phenomenal. Jewish people are being treated now like they were in the beginning in Nazi Germany. That's how Hitler started. He didn't start killing people en masse until about 1940, 1941. He got in power in 1933. What he did was talk and issue laws that dehumanized Jewish people. And basically, the public eventually got used to that, they thought, like Hitler. Anyway, I'd rather die on my feet than live on my knees.
Thank you. Is there any others that would like to speak and call to the public? Yes ma'am.
Chairman Goodman, Supervisors. My name is Deipad Iskey. I live in unincorporated Pinal County, near Lost Edgeman State Park. On a recent walk through the neighborhood, there was a new campaign sign, "We the People are Pissed." The sign reminded me of an election reform that I didn't mention last month, specifically that campaigns should be limited in time and money. Back to the sign's message, yes, people are pissed. They are frustrated, feel hopeless and voiceless, and are worried about the direction the country is headed. But the causes for these feelings stem from very different sources. It's like the song lyric, "You see it your way, I see it my way, but we both see it slipping away." The summer of 1968 was a difficult time for me and the country. MLK, RFK had been assassinated. Vietnam protests were raging. I was poor, pregnant, and living in a surplus WWII barrack that the University of Iowa had converted into duplexes for married student housing. But this is 2024. I, at that time, wallowed in South Pitti as I sat in front of a fan and thought, "This was not supposed to be my life." I was supposed to be in Paris, sitting at sidewalk cafes, sipping wine, discussing art, literature, politics, and philosophy. But this is 2024. I'm still married to the same man. The country didn't implode. And next week, I'm going to Paris for the third time, this time with my sister and my daughter, the one born in 1968. But back to the yard sign, the ubiquitous political use of "we the people" triggers me on three levels. First grammatically, English is made up of sentences which are said of words that convey a complete thought and contain a subject and predicate. Although they are understood subjects, there are no understood predicates. So on its own, "we the people" is meaningless. The words are, however, the first three words in the preamble to the Constitution. Google it. Second, historically, "I bother" as "we" referred only to white property-owning men. Finally, politically, those using the phrase "we the people" might be better served by quoting the Declaration of Independence. But back to the yard sign, what predicate would I use to complete the sentence, beginning with "we the people"? I decided to use an MLK quote. "We the people believe darkness cannot drive out darkness, only light can do that. Hate cannot drive out hate, only love can do that." It's 187 days until the election. What is your predicate? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any others that would like to speak and call to the public? Come on up.
I'm Noel Rec from Eli. First, a clarification. A few meetings back, a previous speaker expressed dismay that Attorney General Mays hadn't brought charges back in 2021 against the fake slate of electors instead of engaging in, quote, "lawfare" now. It should be noted that she was elected in 2022 and didn't fully investigate the fake slate until 2023, having to start from scratch as her predecessor refused to investigate, hoping to curry favor with Donald Trump. Those are the facts, let the cards fall where they may. I'm glad to see item 16 on the agenda. I believe there are many aspects of the role of the Pinal County Superintendent of Public Instruction that should be analyzed and changed. Some fall within the purview of your executive session, others don't. Yet they provide food for thought and a possible impetus for the Board to utilize its position and influence to bring about legislative change in the future. As you discuss the role of the superintendent, think about communities being able to fill their own school board vacancies through a committee comprised of community members, parents, students, staff, administration, and board members, rather than with an obvious political appointment from a county bureaucrat. If it's a good enough process to pick a new football coach, it should be good enough for a new school board member. Think about responsibly vetting applicants. Hypothetically, if you are filling the position, wouldn't you visit the website of an organization sponsored by an applicant, touted before this very board, the Casa Grande Conservative Freedom Lovers? Would quotes such as the following cause you concern over the applicant being appointed to a school board? Regarding their organization, quote, "This site recognizes two sexes only, men and women. If you want to promote LGBTQ, please find another forum to join. I don't dislike you, but I can't accept your lifestyle," unquote. Quote, "We are a private group and do not accept communists, the woke or far-left pinheads. For our standards, I will not apologize. The integrity of this group will not be compromised," unquote. Regarding a new U.S. history textbook selection, quote, "The Board chose to take a teacher's recommendation over the citizens. You wonder why the teachers would choose such a flawed history book. I just read the article. It said there are 87 Democrat teachers to every 13 Republicans. Besides flooding our country with illegals to prop up the Democrat voting numbers, we will push out a bunch of brainwashed graduates to add their names to the Democrat candidates' numbers," unquote. Regarding Donald Trump's plan for education, quote, "To ensure that classrooms are focused not on political indoctrination, but on teaching the knowledge and skills needed, to teach students to love their country, not to hate their country like they're being taught now, and to support bringing prayer back into our schools," unquote. Obviously, change is needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Red. Is there any others that wish to address the board? Mr. Rosales.
Roberto Ravelis, resident of Gold Canyon. Mr. Chairman, members of the Board. We are all understandably overwhelmed and disturbed by news of campus protests, news of indictments of fellow Arizonans posing as fake presidential electors, news of a former president sitting in a courtroom for allegations of criminal actions. All of us wish these weren't the reality of our times. However, rather than decry, rather than detract, rather than avoid discussing these horrific times, we should accept this reality as a precious teaching moment. Opportunities to reflect on our rights and responsibilities, to reinvigorate our belief in the foundational values that undergird our democratic republic, truth, transparency, and accountability. A time for all of us to go beyond rote platitudes and genuinely renew our Pledge of Allegiance to our democratic republic and to our Constitution. As a longtime participant at all levels of government, I'm constantly encouraged that here at our local Board of Supervisors, we witness government at its best and at its most challenging. The sometimes difficult interaction among board members, the challenging interaction with some of us members of the public, but all of us expressing ourselves without fear of violence because of differences of opinion. Yes, it's dismaying to see campus protests that go beyond peaceable assembly, but no more disturbing than seeing violent protesters attacking our nation's Capitol. These are teaching moments that underscore rights and responsibilities, that affirm our Constitution's principles, that no campus protester and no former president is above the law. I encourage all of us to use these teaching moments and renew our faith in our 248-year-old self-governance. We must reject violence against the rule of law, wherever it appears, on the campus, at the Capitol, and on the campaign trail. Let us all renew our commitment to civil dialogue as we continue our country's journey to a more perfect union. My hope springs eternal. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Ravelis. Is there any others that would like to speak? Okay, seeing that there's none, we'll close. Call to the public at this moment. One of the advantages of sitting in this chair is to be able to call an audible. And so we're going to move a couple items. We're going to move one item up, we're going to move another item back. So number 12, we'll move back to the end of the meeting. It was requested by one of our attorneys. And then item number 11, we're going to take at this moment. I know a lot of individuals are here because of item number 11, so we felt it best to move that up. So is there any other discussions or anything that needs to happen?
Mr. Chair, as of last night, we received notice from applicants' council and our council. And we've been asked to continue this item to June 5th so that we can work with staff and the applicant to resolve the location issue. So I'm asking that we continue this item to June 5th.
Do we have a, so that's a motion?
It's a motion, yes.
Okay.
Sorry, yes, I'm not only asking, but I'm making a motion.
Just want to make sure that's clear. Is there a second on that motion?
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay, the ayes have it. So we're going to move this and, when's the next date? The 15th?
June 5th.
Oh, June 5th, that was in the motion, right?
Yes, that was in the motion.
June 5th was in the motion.
Okay, June 5th. Okay. All right. Now, we're going to go back and we'll start with item number two, County Manager's Report.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
A point of, I guess it would be a point of parliamentary inquiry. Did we have debate on the item? Did you open it for debate?
He's asking if we had, if I opened it up for debate. I did ask if there was any, any more discussion or anything else of that nature before the motion was made.
After the motion was made.
No, I, it was before.
Was it before?
Yeah, I asked for if there was any other discussion or anything before the motion was even made.
My ears were listening slower than your.
Oh. And I'm a pretty slow speaker too on top of that. Okay. Yeah. So let's go to item number two, County Manager.
Thank you, Chairman. Just wanted to remind our employees that open enrollment is, is right now and elected officials. So please, everybody, make sure to look at that and complete that before it closes on May 10th. And then wanted to mention a couple events for the Sheriff's Office. Tomorrow evening here at Jason Lopez Circle, they're going to have their Peace Officers Memorial Service, 6:30. And then this Saturday at your Santan Valley District Office, they're going to have a career expo. And so that'll be from 10:30 to 2:00 for those that are interested. There'll be a lot of exciting things out there, like SWAT folks and range deputies and crime scene techs and a lot of fun stuff. It's family-friendly for those, so please come out and, and visit them. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Okay. Any questions for County Manager? All right, item number three, Supervisor District's Updates. Let's start with Supervisor Sertie. Do you have anything that you?
I have two. One is Highway 88 update. Even though it's in Maricopa County, it starts in Pinal County and ends up in Hila County, and it's very important to us. You know, ADOT finally came through with $4 million to get that started. And I just want to let you know that ADOT is up there working, doing the prep on what they need to do on their side. It's now going out to bid this month. They'll then award it to a contractor who will start on it the following month. And it should be drivable in a high clearance vehicle by the fall. So that's great news for Highway 88, well, up at Fish Creek Hill. And the other one is, you'll notice that it stopped raining and it may not rain again for a long, long time. So we all need to be conscious of fire danger and keeping the weeds down and to brush down around your house. We initiated the Fire Wise Community Program. And if you want more info on that, just call your local fire department in whatever region, district you're in, and they will guide you on how to do that, how to make your property safe. So now's the time to do it. Don't wait till it's too late.
Okay. Supervisor Kavanaugh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The City of Coolidge is hearing an item with respect to another solar farm on May 13, 2024, at 7:00 PM in council chambers at 911 South Arizona Boulevard. So if those persons who are within the sound of my voice support or oppose more solar inside the city and as well as the county, I would encourage them to make their voices known at that meeting. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Supervisor McClure.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. See, this last week, Thursday, we opened the Pinal County, well, the Oracle Health Center after a revamp. Pretty cool. It has an FAC involved with that. That's a family advocacy center. For those that don't know that, that's where you go for, if you are the victim of domestic violence or abuse, you can go there. Anyway, very nice place. Next week, off to Washington DC with GPEC, talk about defense and aerospace. And I believe you're on the same flight I am, so see you there.
On the flank. Thank you. And then I'm going to turn this over to Supervisor Miller at the end. So before I do, as mentioned, we're flying out to go talk about economic development and the things that are necessary for us to move things forward here. So we'll be flying out Monday morning and coming back on Thursday. But there's quite a lineup of, of key individuals that we're going to be meeting with and discussing some of the needs and everything, from water to aviation to infrastructure roads, everything of that nature, so. And then I, we just, last week, we did a appreciation for our volunteers and our different commissions. And so I'd asked that we did a video, they did a video, and I'd like to share that with the rest of you.
Today, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, they are recognizing 132 appointees. We're having our volunteer appreciation luncheon today to thank all of our volunteers for the hard work that they do here for Pinal County.
It was wonderful. Every time I come to these functions, the food is excellent, excellent.
The Board of Supervisors, they make appointments to 18 different boards and commissions. These provide different services on behalf of the supervisors, whether it be our Planning and Zoning Board, our Workforce Development Board. Mainly what it is, is a civic affair, providing services for all of the constituent states here in Pinal County.
I sit on the Board of Adjustments, and I sit on the Law Enforcement Merit Council.
We do have community partners that also recognize and appreciate the service that you're providing to the county as well. And today it was SRP.
When we sat in there and had this luncheon that was given to us by the Board of Supervisors, by the county, that shows their appreciation to us. That shows that we're not just a number. We're part of the structure of this county.
Each supervisor had an opportunity to give away three different door prizes.
Number 883.
Those are Pinal County swag, also a portrait from each one of their districts as well. The volunteer challenge coins. This year was the first year that we did those. We wanted to have something that would remind the volunteers who their appointment was made by. And so we have the Board of Supervisors' names on the back of those challenge coins this year.
They could tell us thank you all day, but we have to thank them because they had enough faith in us to appoint us to the position.
They do it because they care about Pinal County. They care about the district that they stay in. And we are honored to have individuals like that in Pinal County.
My granddaughter told me, she says, "Grandpa, you're 73 years old. What are you doing driving down to Florence?" I said, "Babe, I do it because I enjoy." It's something that is gratifying to the heart, gratifying to the community. I get satisfaction that I'm knowing that I'm helping not just my community, but I'm also helping the county. but I'm also helping the county.
That was very well done. Thank you. And then last but surely not least, Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's with a heavy heart to, I'm taking a personal point of privilege about the passing of Sherry Clough. She was an institution here. I think she served at Pinal County for over 35 years. She was the deputy clerk and then clerk of the board for, I don't, I won't try to figure out those numbers, but to know her was to love her. She was a fantastic woman. When I took this office and was named chair of the Board of Supervisors, which I'd never served as a, on the Board of Supervisors, she held my hand and guided me through a whole lot of stuff. And she was a fantastic woman. And she's going to be sorely missed by not just her family, but a lot of her friends that still are connected to Pinal County. So some of you may not know her because a lot has changed since she left here. But man, she was, she was fantastic. A little kudos to Mr. Keller. She used to tell me, "Chris Keller is the best civil attorney I've ever met." So that's a kudos from Sherry. But it's, I'm, you know, just sorry to say, there'll be a funeral for her on Tuesday. If you can attend, I'm sure the family would appreciate it. But anyway, thank you for that personal point of privilege.
You bet.
And it says here that there's a video of my town hall. And I would not be in this position had it not been for the help of Sherry Clough over the years when, when we first got started here. Leo and I were sharing about some of the, some of the antics that took place, but she got us through it at times when we needed help, so. Thank you, everyone.
We're at the town hall, Steve Miller's town hall.
It's important that the public have access to my office, have access to the county's processes so they can better understand what's going on.
I wanted to get more information about the county, and I wanted to have some transparency regarding what is the function of the county, how is it managing itself, and things that I have a concern about.
It's important to hear from the folks. I always like to know what the constituents want to know. Either they want to know or they want to tell me what they think should ought to be fixed.
We talked about water, which is very important. Supervisor Miller really broke it down as easy as he could for the timeframe that he had on how water certificates are given and how we really haven't given one in the last seven years.
Certificate of Assured Water is not water law. It's consumer protection. I think Joe did a good job on the cost of transportation dollars. People are starting to understand how difficult it is to fund transportation in the state of Arizona.
The Maintenance and Transportation Improvement Fund, that's not a new tax. It's a reauthorization of a tax that's been out there for about 40 years now. First was approved in 1986, and they run in 20-year cycles. So it expired the first and then was reauthorized again for another 20-year cycle. And it's coming up to sunset again December, end of December 2026.
The lady from the Santa Rosa Ranches, "Can't we just stripe the roads?" What a legitimate question. I mean, really, I don't know what it costs us, but I think we could find the dollars to do that.
With the city getting bigger, it's darker at night and everything, and having those reflectors on the street increases safety in our community.
I did not realize that it was going to be the law and order forum tonight because, I mean, the people are concerned about law and order within our county. And it was good to have Mark here for, for some explanations on some of that. When something happens, we step in and start, you know, trying to mitigate the damage. When we lost all the power in Arizona City and all the flooding and everything, it goes back to all the things that the county did for those people to mitigate the severity of the storm. And that can happen again. It can happen anytime. And so those are the kinds of things I like to make sure that the guy on the street knows about. I think one of the things that came out in the discussions tonight, all of these issues are a little more complex than the person on the street realizes. But I think these types of forums helps us get that message out.
I think that transparency in our community is very important. And when you have citizen engagement, you have buy-in. And I think that so long as we have these events and community members are able to come in and have their opinions heard, have their suggestions heard, have their concerns heard, then they have more investment in the community, and I think that's amazing. So I think definitely more town halls, more forums are very important.
With the exception of a couple people, I think I called them all by their first name because I knew a lot of them. But that makes me feel good because they are the ones that do come and see me, and they will tell people, "If you have a problem, you go see Steve Miller." You know, they let people know that, that I'm an honest broker and I'm willing to help them any way I can.
Thank you. Kevin does a great job of making us look good. But I do enjoy the town hall forums that I have because, as I said, I like to hear from the folks. That's who I represent. They're probably not too interested in what I know. I would, I need to know what they want to know. And so I try and provide that conduit to, to the, to access the public. So thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Miller, all of you, for taking the time to bring us up to speed on what's happening in your own personal districts. Item number four, discussion approval disapproval of a request for the Board of Supervisors to approve a proclamation declaring the week of May 6 through May 10 of 2024 as Economic Development Week. Mr. Smith. Mr. Smith goes to Washington.
Yes. Natasha, do they need to approve this first or?
Just want to.
Before you read it.
Yeah, is there any, is there any discussion regarding it, gentlemen?
I don't think so.
Okay. So do I have a motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve item number four as presented.
Second.
We have a motion, second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. So.
Great. Thank you, Chairman and Board. I just want to thank you not only for approving this, this proclamation, but for how much you support economic development all the time. It's great to work for a board that is so supportive of economic development. So Economic Development Week was created by the International Economic Development Council and of which the county is a member. And so with that, I'll read the proclamation. Says, "Whereas economic development promotes the well-being and quality of life in our communities by assisting in creating, retaining, and expanding jobs that enhance wealth, stimulate additional economic activity, and provide a stable tax base. And whereas economic development stimulates entrepreneurialism in order to help establish the next generation of new businesses, which are a hallmark of the American economy. And whereas economic development is conducted in a wide variety of settings, including by governments at the local, county, state, and federal level, chambers of commerce, universities, and other institutions, and it has components of public-private partnerships that both support rural and urban development, workforce development, and tourism. And whereas economic development seeks to grow and diversify the retail business base in municipalities in order to serve the needs of residents and to help retain local sales tax dollars, which are crucial in providing services expected by residents. And whereas economic development helps to bring significant business investment, develops vibrant communities, and improves overall well, overall quality of life by having located here in Pinal County, enhancing economic well-being and reducing commute times. Now therefore, we, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors hereby proclaim the week of May 6 through May 10, 2024, as Economic Development Week and remind individuals of the importance of this community endeavor, which supports expanded career opportunities and makes lives better throughout Pinal County. Proclaim this first day of May, 2024." So again, thank you very much for the recognition and as well as all of your support.
Okay, thank you. Should we get a photo?
Get a photo?
Photo? Photo. Let's do a photo.
Doing what I can to try to make you guys look better. And there we go, looks good. Three, two. Okay, this time you're going to smile though. Three, two. There we go, that's nice.
Okay, on to item number five. Discussion approval disapproval of proclamation adopting the week of May 5 through May 11, 2024 as Public Service Recognition Week. Did you have anything you want to add to that, Leo?
Oh, thank you, Chairman. Yeah, and Mary Ellen's up here, and I'm so curious to see what she's going to say because she always has such cool things to say. I would just say, I'm glad that President Reagan proclaimed this week that I think, you know, those of us working in public service and elected officials are the very fiber of the quilt of Pinal County. And I would just ask that as we do our service, we remember to do it most importantly with love, charity, and with civility. So thank you, Mary Ellen.
Chairman Goodman, members of the board, Mary Ellen Shepherd, Deputy County Manager. Every year since the mid-1980s, the first week of May has been set aside as Public Service Recognition Week. A time to thank the dedicated public servants from federal, state, and local governments across the country. Public service is a privilege given to us by the communities we serve. So prior for, to asking for approval of the proclamation acknowledging Public Service Recognition Week, it's important to start from a place of gratitude for the people of Pinal County. Thank you to all of those who give us the privilege to serve them. And to each of the public servants here in Pinal County, let us not forget that we've been given the opportunity and the responsibility to make life better for our communities. This proclamation acknowledges all of those individuals who are committed to that goal and work tirelessly to make certain that it's not just words on paper, but that we truly commit our time, our energies, and our love to making this a better place to live for all who are here. And with that, Chairman, I would respectfully ask on behalf of all public servants in the community we serve that you approve the proclamation declaring the first week of May as Public Service Recognition Week. Thank you.
You bet. Thank you. Is there any discussion? All right. Motion moving forward.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve item five as presented.
Go second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? It's unanimous. And I've been asked to read this proclamation. So by the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, proclamation, Public Service Recognition Week of May 11, or May 5 through May 11, 2024. Whereas in 1985, President Ronald Reagan introduced Public Service Recognition Week honoring the indispensable contributions that public servants make. And whereas the employees of Pinal County and other public servants in the town, cities, and state departments servicing Pinal County worked diligently to provide essential services that enhance the quality of life in our communities. And whereas these dedicated public servants in areas such as animal care and control, justice services, elections, education, economic and development services, health, and many others demonstrate their commitment to residents of Pinal County through their expertise, compassion, and tireless service. And whereas public servants embodied the spirit of civic responsibility, often going up above and beyond the call of duty to respectfully guide, protect, educate, support, and enrich our urban and rural communities. And whereas George Washington wisely stated, "The harder the conflict, the greater the triumph," a reminder that facing the challenges of public service brings about the most meaningful rewards. And now therefore, we, the Board of Supervisors of Pinal County, to hereby proclaim the week of May 5 through May 11, 2024 as Public Service Recognition Week in Pinal County and encourage all citizens to express their sincere appreciation to our valued public servants. Proclaim this day of May 1, 2024. Okay. We get a picture of all the employees and everybody together. Oh, Photoshop, you got it there.
The cameraman's over here in the wings.
Should we have a picture? Let's do it, and they can send it. Oh, let's just maybe do a selfie from here and shoot out that way, right? Any ideas? Let's do it. Now, how do you, how would you do this?
I'm looking, yeah, we do have a lot of employees out there. Gentlemen, how about we stand up and we try that? If the light works out, I'll shoot with everybody behind you.
That'd be great.
Stand right here.
Actually, I think that'd probably be better. We'll put you down here.
Okay.
We could get them to stand on the chairs.
Natasha just passed out.
Oh, this works. Okay, everybody's happy. I know you love having your picture taken. Three, two. Nice, one more. Three, two, one. There we go.
Okay. Item number six. Wait. Yeah. Trying to speed me along. Number six, discussion approval disapproval of proclamation declaring May 5 through May 11, 2025 for, as the 55th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. The declaration expresses gratitude to the professional county clerks of the board for their valuable contributions towards ensuring efficient county service operations within their offices. I think that's pretty self-explanatory.
Yes, thank you.
Do you need to?
Yes, thank you, Chairman. Thank you, Board. In 1984, President Reagan officially declared Clerks Week. And then again, in 1994 and '96, President, President Clinton confirmed those weeks as Clerks Weeks as well. The clerk is a county officer whose position is established by law and whose duties are vital to all governments at all levels. The role of the clerk is of great historical significance. The role of the clerk is of great historical significance as it is the oldest position among public servants and has had and has been a critical part of government operations for centuries worldwide. Also, this week, the week of Clerks Week, the clerk of the Board Office will be celebrating all week long, so make sure you pay close attention to the communications that's coming out from our Communications and Marketing Department for those different activities that will be taking place in the clerk's office as well. And with that, Chairman and Board, I do respectfully request for the Board's approval.
Okay.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
I move that we approve item six as presented and just load this week up with more proclamations.
Okay. We have motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any oppose? Ayes have it. And I was asked to read this one as well. Professional Municipal Clerks Week, Professional Clerks of the Board, May 5th through the 11th of 2024. Whereas the office of clerks is a time-honored and indispensable component of local governments across the globe and here in Arizona. And whereas clerks have made a solemn commitment to remain mindful of their impartiality and neutrality, providing equitable service to all, this pledge ensures that they offer consistent and fair treatment to each individual regardless of their background or circumstances. And whereas clerks play a pivotal role as the primary source of information for local government and community events, they serve as a centralized hub for disseminating information on the functions of local government and, whereas although Arizona Clerk Associations may include county or municipal in their titles, they share a common goal, to share our communities and promote their well-being. In essence, they are all united by the same purpose and identity as clerks. They are all clerks. And whereas clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of their office through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their stage, county and internal professional organizations, now therefore, we, the Pinal County Board of Supervisors, do recognize the week of May 5th through May 11th, 2024 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and further extend gratitude to the professional county clerks of the Board and staff for their indispensable services and unwavering commitment to the counties they serve, proclaim this first day of May, 2024."
Let's get a photo op.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to explain my vote, per the rules.
Yeah?
Yeah. If I may?
You, sure.
The rules permit us to explain our vote, so I'm gonna explain my vote with respect to that item and particularly with Ms. Natasha Kennedy. Today, I asked Ms. Kennedy how she was doing when she came in, and she said wonderful. I woke up today and every day I get up is a blessing. And a couple other things she said which were interesting. It reminded me of an old statement by Chuck Swindoll, it said, "The longer I live, the more I realize the impact of attitude on life." Attitude is more than, more than important facts, it's more than the past and education, so on. The paragraph goes on, but so the only thing that we can do is play the string we have, and that's our attitude. I'm convinced that life is 10% of what happens to me and 90% how I react to it. And that embodies our wonderful clerk of the Board, Natasha Kennedy, so.
Here, here, would agree. Item number eight. Uh-oh. Item number, we're back to seven. I'm trying to get ahead. You, you got me off track, dude. So, item number seven, discussion and updates regarding the 2024 State and Federal Legislative Session. Supervisor Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. There has been little activity, seeing how the state legislature's only meeting one day a week right now, and it's on Wednesdays, which is right now, and something's happening because my phone's blowing up. But as of this morning, there has been very little going on. There are negotiations on the budget between the legislature and the, and the Governor's Office. So, but maybe at the end of the day, there'll be something, but at this point in time, I have nothing to report.
Okay. Thank you. If there's something, would you see that Natasha gets that and she can distribute it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Okay, item number eight, Purchasing Division Report. Ms. Woods, good morning. It is still morning, right? Yeah, we're still, wow.
Good morning Chairman Goodman, members of the Board, Auntie Woods, Director of the Office of Budget and Finance, and today I have your purchasing division report for May 1st, 2024. The Board has requested to approve the following contract award, IFB 245325 for Pinal County Housing Authority New Sewer Connection. The contract recommends Deacon Construction LLC to be awarded, the contract in the bid amount of $930,777 with a contingency amount of $67,000. This contract will be used by our Housing Department. Next, the Board is requested to approve a contract amendment for RFP 203026 for Public Defense Services, Office Attorney Services, we're recommending approval of amendment number four to exercise optional extension period from July 1st of 2024 through June 30th of 2025 with Kenny Law LLC, Anthony L. Kenny, John G. Schoss, Attorney at Law, Law Office of Jamie Sparks, Law Offices of J.R. Wallace, Joshua Roth Wallace, Law Office of Michael Vialroel, Law Office of Nicole L. Severson, P.C., Paul D. Green, Attorney/Mediator, LLC, Winkley Law Firm, Catherine Winkley. There's one optional extension remaining on this contract. Next, the Board is requested to approve purchase requests per Pinal County Policy, Procurement Policy Code Section PC 1-350 governing competition impracticable purchases over $100,000 in the amount of $600,000 with supplier Capsco International Corporation for Engine Conversion Compressor on our Huey, and it's for the Department of Sheriff's Office. Next, the Board is requested to approve the following cooperative purchases, PO number 242752 with Andrews Refrigeration Incorporated in the amount of $257,578.19 for replacement of air, an air conditioning unit for our Housing Department. Lastly, requisition number 169942 with Conference Technologies Incorporated in the amount of $259,305.91 for 11 each by AMP TESSERA servers for our Superior Court Administration. Are there any questions?
Is there any question, gentlemen? Okay, do we have motion moving forward then?
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the purchasing division report as presented.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose?
Thank you.
It's unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Woods. Okay, number nine, consent items. All items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agenda unless a board member, county manager, or member of the public objects to the time, at the time the agenda item is called. So, first of all, Board, is there any items that you'd like to see pulled? County manager, anybody from the public? Seeing that there's none, motion moving forward.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item nine as presented.
We have a motion, a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Ayes have it. Were we supposed to pull item number F, or is there nobody here? Okay, all right. And now, it's too late now, right? That's what my brother-in-law used to always say, "It's too late." Item number 10. Oh, we're going to recess the Pinal County Board of Regular Session and we'll now move on to the Pinal County Public Health Service District. It appears all we have on the agenda is, is consent items. So, any, all consent items indicated by an asterisk will be handled by a single vote as part of the consent agendas unless a member, county manager, or member of the public wishes to have any item pulled. Anybody from the Board? County manager, anybody from the public? We have motion moving forward then.
Mr. Chair, I move we approve the consent items A through D on the Public Health Services District.
Okay, we have motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. All in favor say aye. Aye. Any oppose? Ayes have it. We'll now close the Pinal County Health, Public Health Service District and we'll reconvene our regular signed hours. So, we've already moved item number 211 to the end of our items, which leaves us, we're at item number 13.
Chairman?
Yes.
If I may, item number 11 has already been, we've already taken action on item number 11. Item number 12 is what we're, correct.
That's why you're there. Keep us in line. So, number 13, this is a public hearing and it's a discussion approval, disapproval of case CSR 017-23. This is Joseph Wallace of Spotlight Signs on behalf of Adele Soul Ventures LLC requesting removal, approval of a comprehensive sign package to allow the installation of three wall signs. So, with that, do we have, is Val here? Oh, there she is. You snuck up on me.
Good morning Board, county staff, members of the audience. My name is Val Luhon and I'll be presenting on case CSR 01723 on behalf of the Planning Division. So, a little synopsis of the case is, it is for a comprehensive site package that would allow three wall-mounted signs and then one freestanding sign at the Sombournes Food Establishment in Santan. The location there, address provided, 440 East Combs Road in Santan Valley, northeast corner of Combs and Ganzel. The exact parcel is provided for you there, and it is Zoned CB2 for general business. The owner slash applicant, we have Joseph Wallace of Spotlight Signs on behalf of Sombournes. They are not in attendance today. We're providing you the county map just to show you where that subject site is located in the context of the county. A vicinity map showing you the full scope of that provided by our GIS team for the surrounding land uses, and then a bit more zoomed in for you to show the abutting CB2. Arrow map captured is some of the development out there. This is the outreach map and it shows the extent, the extent of our outreach for notice of hearing purposes. Those are all the folks that would have been notified in our efforts. Some site photos that were captured for you, so we're looking north onto the site, looking south off of the site. Top ones, we're looking west, and bottom ones, we are looking east. So, site layout and signage, so signs A and B, the site layout provides you where these signs are located in that highlighted yellow parts. So, signs A and B, those are the wall-mounted, they're name signs. We provide you the structure height there and then what the area of that signage square footage is. And for signs A and B, they are facing Combs Road. For sign C, it's also wall-mounted. This one specifically is the name and logo sign. Structure height is about 5.12 feet, and the area in square footage is 23.99, and that's located on the east side of the establishment. And then the freestanding sign would be a name and a logo sign with the signage height being 4.6 feet, but the full signage area is a bit higher. The size, sorry, the signage area, 3.35.6 per side for a total of 71.2. Here's some more detail of the signs. So, signs A and B, they equal to 47.44 square feet. Sign C, we see that logo in the name sign, 23.99, and then sign D, we have at 71.2 square feet, and again, that's for both faces. And so, that would be for a signage total of 142.63 square feet. Just giving you some building specs that were provided by the applicant, so that's on the south and southeast side, on the east side at the bottom. And then just to kind of recap what occurred at the Comprehensive Sign Review Committee meeting, so there was just some clarification on freestanding signs. Staff had made a statement that that is typical of these types of establishments, and one of the members took it as all Sombournes would have it, and they noted Queen Creek does not have that. And so, we further, we further described how establishments where adjacent road rage and the frontage kind of facilitates the increased visibility, that is where they would be located, not necessarily all Sombournes sign, not all Sombournes establishments, and if you're familiar with the Queen Creek one, likely a freestanding sign would not be beneficial. There was also a miscalculation in the, in the express motion from the CSR, so that resulted in different signage. And because of that, the CSR team was referencing the sign matrix that gave estimates as opposed to the exact signage. And so, we did ask the applicant to revise those documents, and for BOS, the exact signage was provided in all updated documents. And so, with that, we do request that the BOS recognize the actual signage in motion. Some additional items for consideration would be that the zoning only allows up to 48 square feet. The applicant is requesting a total of 142.63 square feet, and so because that is a 25% or more increase, that leads us for BOS approval. Again, just restating, there was a miscalculation from the CSR committee, and so we do ask that if this is approved, that it reflects the true signage that is being sought, which is 142.63. At the CSR meeting, I believe it was increased to about 143.2, so they had motion for some greater signage. So, we received no comments of opposition or support, and we do view it as inappropriate deviation from the signage limitations, not posing any type of safety concern. And so, with that, we do recommend approval of CSR 01723 as presented with no further stipulations. And if there's any questions, I can entertain them now.
Any questions? Okay. Seeing that there's none, this is a public hearing, so is there anybody from the public, we'll open that now, that would like to come and speak to this item? Okay, seeing that there's none, we'll close the public hearing. Board members moving forward, any motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make motion to approve item 13 as presented.
Got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I know where to get my burles. Okay, we're gonna go back to item number 12. I see Mr. Cameron came in, so we're gonna go back to item number 12, if that's all right? You good with that? Okay. Okay. Alright. This, item number twelve is a discussion approval disapproval to authorize Pinal County to take all necessary action to enforce the civil hearing officer finding of violations against Christopher Theme up to and including filing in the Superior Court.
Good morning, Chairman, Vice Chairman, Manager. We're here today, this is a continuation of a very narrow issue. This isn't an appeal, this is simply allowing the county attorney's office to proceed as designed in the ordinance that we have pursuant to the authority that the board provides under eleven two oh one A one. This is a case regarding a building without a permit. It may be pretty, but I don't know of any pretty exception to the code. We continued it. I believe there was a request for the transcript of the hearing office proceeding. Hopefully you've had a chance to review that. It explains better than I as to the procedure and the dialogue and the negotiation and the attempts at compliance that were entered into by the code compliance investigator and their office. I turn over to Supervisor Miller who...
Yeah, well, I didn't see the transcript, but I was never able to contact the individual. I don't know if the information that was given to me for contact, it wasn't, it was a wrong number, so not much I can do at this point.
Yeah.
I think, I don't, I think there's, I think there's a resolution out there, but the time and efforts to try and do that are very limited.
And if I can, this does not end any opportunity to negotiate and move toward a resolution.
Okay, well, thank you, then, that's good.
Absolutely. We keep on, we want compliance and anything we can do to find compliance will help.
I have a question. I mean, they built this building, everything, without a permit. What happens? I mean, do they still have the ability to get a permit? Is it, is it has to be? Help me with that one. Because it's a bigger building.
Yes, they still have an opportunity to pursue a permit. We'd love to have them come in and go through the permitting process to confirm that things just might be okay.
Okay.
If, I'm a little frustrated. We, we had the transcript printed out and we thought we got it to you and it lays out the number of times Mr. Theme has said, yes, I'm going right down to get a permit and he hasn't.
Yeah, I saw those timelines that you had clear back from, I think it was twenty twenty-two. Yeah. Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I just?
You bet.
I just want to touch base on something. It, it has to do with the permit process and particularly this type of a, of a, of a building. Because it's, well casings welded together. It's put together, it's pretty, pretty agricultural type thing that you see out there a lot.
From the roadway, I, I don't think it's well casings, but it is a large thirty-five hundred square foot structure.
What, what product do you think? Because I could only see it from the pictures.
Right. And, and flat out, I, I will be able to use in the Superior Court process, the authority to enter the property with notice and saying, hey, we want to come in and look at the, the structure to find out what needs to be done.
Okay.
That allow us to go on the property, look at it, bang on it.
Well, and let me get to the next step then.
Okay.
Because what happens is, oh, you'll need to get an engineer. And to get an engineer to certify something that's already built is, I don't want to say it's impossible, if it is possible, it's very expensive. I mean, that, that's, and that's the issue.
If...
There's hundreds of them out there that have never blown down and I think the risk is to the homeowner, not even, or the person that built it. And that's where, that's, that's where I think the, there has to be some give in some of this process as to really what is the liability to the county.
If they came in upfront during the permitting process, they would have those engineer dynamics.
But you know what it would, you know, I mean, you're talking, you're probably talking another, probably ten to twenty thousand dollars for engineering.
Mr. Theme suggested forty-five hundred was the price that he was...
I don't know. I, and then it would be the footings and it would be the, you know, and who's going to inspect the pipe and who's going to? It's just, it just opens up Pandora's Box and it, and it becomes unreasonable. And so I don't know, I don't know where the challenge, I don't know where the, where the real, what I want to say, where a person will be able to do something like that and, and not have to go through all the hassles. And I just think that there has to be a little bit more of a give by governance on some of this stuff. Because in my eyes, the county has zero liability. Zero.
I can advise you on that.
So...
I represent the county in this position.
No, I understand, but, I mean, seriously, if it blows down, who's out?
I fell to, and so Supervisor Miller, I, I fell to, we have special counsel Andrew McGuire, he's on the phone telephonically, correct? Are you there, Andrew?
Yes, sir, I am.
Okay, you've been hearing some of the discussions here from Supervisor Miller. Can you address that? The liability to the county?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I, I think that that's a question that you probably should have answered in executive session if that is the desire of the board to have that discussion right now. It's not, we don't typically like to address issues of liability in the public session.
I'm sure you don't. Would you like to go?
Mr. Chairman, I would be happy to do that. What about our BWOP process, the Built Without Permit process?
Yeah, what is that process? That we have for built without a permit?
I see smiles now.
Well, he built without a permit. So they already passed that.
But, but there's a, but there's a, it seems to me that there's a, let's go to executive.
Yeah.
Okay, should we just go into east? Go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I would move that we move to executive session to discuss this item.
You have a second?
Second.
All in favor say aye.
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 Alright, we're in executive session. Ecess, our executive session, can go back to item number twelve. Is there any further questions or anything that we need to ask? We, we do have, Andrew, you still on the line?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thanks. Any other questions? Okay, do we have a motion moving forward then?
I'm not making a motion. Well, should we have a little further discussion in public?
Sure. It's your guys prerogative, so let's open it up.
Thank you, sir.
You bet.
So this is an issue where, this is apparently generated, this, this case started as the result of a complaint, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. And the transcript you're referring to, we didn't get that. Just the timeline, or is the timeline the transcript?
Transcript is different. Transcript is from the hearing office proceeding.
Okay. And do you think that would be important for us to see to make a decision on? The case? You mentioned you were disappointed that we didn't see it. Is that important that we see that to make a decision?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, the timeline, the timeline just shows that, you know, phone calls have been made and no contact back from the property owner over and over from twenty-two, December twenty-seven, twenty-one, received a call from the property owner regarding the notice, emails, and crickets after that.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions or anything else? Okay. Is there no further discussion? Alright, motion moving forward. Being that nobody else is going to, I'm going to make a motion that we move this forward, but with the stipulation that, that all possibilities look at in regards to this. Trying to get this resolved immediately without, you know what, honestly, I don't know how to go on this one because I think there's a lot of mixed emotions and things in regards to this and... Listen, the bottom line is, he built a building whether he knew he needed a permit or not. He owns the property and our rules stipulates that they got to have a building permit, correct? And that's a discussion between all of us here, the five of us. And so because of that, there's a violation obviously here. And so do we really have, in my opinion, an alternative other than, because you look at the timeline here, clear back from twenty twenty-two, December of twenty-two, all the way through to present, when it was finally turned over to our attorney's office.
Fifteen months?
Yeah.
That's December, December twenty-one starts.
December twenty-one?
Yeah. And then it goes to nine twenty twenty-three was whenever it was referred to our county attorney's office. And so basically acting as a ghost for that amount of time, obviously got letters more than likely, was, was any of those letters certified or anything else and signed for by the landowner?
You know, I don't know, but I do know in June of twenty twenty-three, we had a meeting with Mr. Theme and the people at the meeting were the Brent Billingsley, Gilbert Code Compliance people. There was probably eight county personnel with Mr. Theme there with an idea of how to go forward. A compliance plan was set up that he needed to respond to. He didn't respond to it, that's why we went to a hearing on a separate matter dealing with the lighting on his property. We were given authority by the board to go to Superior Court to enforce that. That resulted in default where he did not appear, did not make any pleadings.
So you have that, that's, that's been adjudicated?
The lighting issue has been adjudicated.
And, and so where are you at in that?
We're waiting for this case to try to bring everything together to get a resolution.
So the hearing wasn't about this case, it was about lighting?
Correct, it was a different, it was on a different parcel.
Yeah. And if I may, real quick, just, but the meeting where you brought eight or nine staffers to one at, was about the hay barn?
It was about both of the cases.
It was about both cases?
We were trying to bring everything resolved.
Okay. Okay.
So, so, so no inspection has been made of this shade structure?
No.
No. And, and the owner is not willing to let anyone on the property to take a look at it?
At this point, of course not.
So if we move forward on this and allowed you to go to court so that you could then get access to the property and someone could inspect it and they say, oh, it's fine, I mean, it's standing here, it's not going anywhere, nothing's really wrong with it, where do we go? Do you, can you come back to us and talk to it? Well, you're not going to tell me, but...
I, I don't know where it's at, you know, what, what are we going to do? We're going to look at all the alternatives. You know, I mean, we've got to investigate, we want compliance.
Right, so if we, if we voted to move forward on this item and it was inspected or looked at or whatever the term is, we'd probably want someone to come back to discuss the item here instead of just going to court and then taking off down the permit process. I would like to hear more about it.
We want to, we want a report.
We want a follow-up report.
Follow-up.
That's your discretion.
Okay, that, I guess that's in essence what I was trying to say in my motion.
That's the motion you're trying to make?
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
So you're looking for a motion, Ms. Kennedy, I'm sure, at this point. So, Mr. Chair, I'd move that we approve item twelve to allow the Pinal County Attorney to take all necessary action to enforce the civil hearing office, finding the violations, like what it says there. And, I know, I'm not going to read the whole thing, et cetera, et cetera. And, and to go ahead and access the property and then come back with a report at a future date.
Why don't we set a future date?
Well...
Range between six and eight months?
How about three months?
Okay.
Can we do three?
Three to four months?
That's, to me, that's plenty.
Do we have a board date set in that range?
We'll know in a minute.
What do you think, Steve?
It's about August?
August? Are you good with that, Steve?
Because I think July is pretty blank.
Yeah.
So we can do August the seventh or August the twenty-first?
Let's do the twenty-first. Oh, you want to do the seventh?
August seventh.
Okay.
I'd move for August seventh.
August seventh?
Okay. Do we have a second on that motion?
I'll second the motion.
Okay, we got a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Sorry it took us a little while to get to that point, but, as you can tell, there's a lot of mixed feelings when it comes to stuff like this and so I think at the end of the meeting, when we asked for future agenda items, this is one that we ought to... Yeah. Okay, we're on to item number fourteen. Discussion approval disapproval resolution number zero five zero one two four dash TET by the Pinal County Board is calling for the question of continuing a countywide transportation tax. Kevin, wait a minute. Oh, I, yeah, he did.
Good morning, or good afternoon, still, still got a few more minutes.
Okay.
Chairman, Vice Chair, Board of Supervisors, Joe Ortiz, Pinal County Development Services Managing Director. Here to present item fourteen, which is a request resolution by the board for the continuing of a countywide transportation and road maintenance improvement fund to be placed on the general election as Proposition four eighty-six. And just for the board's education and maybe more for the public is that this is not a new tax, this is a reauthorization of a tax that's been out there for forty years now. It was originally approved or passed in nineteen eighty-six and they work in twenty-year cycles and it was renewed in two thousand and five and this next twenty-year cycle is set to sunset, set to sunset, December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Any discussion? Oh, Supervisor Miller?
Yeah, real quick, calling for this question on this item puts some sideboards on how we discuss this and present it in, in the public going forward. I, I'm curious if everybody understands kind of the rules of engagement that go along with this because the county can show no favoritism either way, any, they can't, they, they have to just stay super neutral in, in, in any way. I think, and we'll let Mr. Kelly, he's probably better at opining on this.
I think, and we'll let Mr. Keller, he's probably better at opining on this item, but it is important that we all understand.
You're absolutely correct, Supervisor Miller. Arizona statutes, you know, prohibit the use of government resources when it comes to elections for the purpose of influencing the outcome of an election. You can not use computers, you cannot use, you know, other media sources, and because this has now been given a proposition number, that is really the triggering date if this is approved by the board, so that your guardrails would be on, you can provide information, we can respond on those type of requests, and we're happy to give you, you know, a memo to that effect, what some of those limitations are, and in fact, we did something very similar back in, in 2017, and we provided to the board some attorney-client advice at that point in time, and I think that was before one of the other propositions that, it might have been the PRTA one at that point in time, as to what the board could or could not do. So we're happy to do that and provide you that information, but yeah, essentially the guardrails are, you cannot use county resources, you can provide information, and you can provide data, you know, what would this tax generate, you know, how much, what would it be used for? But you cannot take a position as for, as, please vote for this. That does not mean that you couldn't, could not, in your personal capacity, you know, write something to the paper, you know, advocating for, for this to move forward, but you cannot do it in your official capacity as a board member. So that's the generic guardrails at this point in time, and we can provide more detail if you wish.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes. Supervisor Miller?
Yeah, thank you. Chris, are we allowed to reflect back on maybe what the tax has done in the past? I mean, can we use that as information to the public?
I, I believe we probably could, but I think we want to run that by legal first as to what the exact messaging is, so that we make sure that it is just factual information that is being provided. We generated X amount of millions over the past 20 years, they were used on this list of projects and so forth, that type of thing, that would be informational.
Yeah, you got to keep it factual.
You just can't, you can't have a, you just can't have an opinion on it, you can just have facts.
But we can have an opinion.
Personally.
Except, personal. Okay.
Look forward to the memo.
Yeah. Okay. Any other discussions? All right. Board's prerogative, moving forward.
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve item 14 as presented.
Second. And we have, we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Ayes have it. That's our opinion, by the way. Okay. Item number 15, discussion of board members' requests for future agenda items and/or reports to be presented at an upcoming meeting. Anybody have anything that they want to add?
I think we should have a discussion, Mr. Chairman, of this, these types of buildings that we discussed today with, it's a shade structure, it's, it's over cows, not people, and so on and so forth, so with, with the help of our development department.
Yeah, that'd be great. So Leo, could you make sure that happens, and get with her, and then they can look at, because one of them was in our discussion that we had earlier, so that'd be great.
The BWOP process.
The BWOP process, thank you. Supervisor Miller?
Chairman, thank you. There, there's a couple of things. One, with that, because I do, I had, I have put a request in to Leo's office and Hamachi on my weekly sync-up meeting about the ag status, and I think Hamachi had said that he'd, he'd done something, an analysis of that, and I haven't seen it yet, so I want to make sure that we follow up on that, because I, I know somebody that's bought a farm, it's got a hay barn on it, they're going to build another hay barn, but they want to just, they're, they're gun-shy, and they want to make sure that they're legal, that's just the way it is. And then I do also want to make sure to follow up, this county has gotten, the NIMBY bug has really hit this place so hard, I've asked for that map of the solar panels, where they're, where they've been approved, where they've been built, and I want to include that in and around the cities, because I think the cities have some of this. There was an open house on a generating plant last night, it was pitchforks and rakes, it's, it, it, it's, that slogan, wide open opportunities, scratch it out, because I'm telling you, this is, they just, they don't want anything. The, the public has really turned on some of this, and I, I don't know where it's coming from on how, how we address it going forward, so, just, but that map, I think it would be good for us to have, so we have a visual, not just for the Board of Supervisors, but for the public as well.
Supervisor McClure, you didn't have, okay.
No, I don't have anything.
You know, and in conjunction with that, if we could have staff, community development come up with some rezonings on particular apartment complexes and things of that nature, specifically in my area, and so that we can look at that, there's a lot more that are coming, and so I think that's something that would be beneficial as well, back to your NIMBY situation. Okay. Anybody else? All right, seeing that there's none, the remaining two items is in executive session, we've already had a, and we're going to go back into executive session then. Thank you. We'll come back and close.